We'll have that this evening with our Heritage High School Junior OTC Program.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, colors. Colors, colors, colors. Colors, colors. Colors.
And as we call our meeting over, we give them a round of applause for all the thank you, please be seated as we call our meeting to an end. We will begin that this evening, Ms. Bailey, with our road call, please.
Randy Early Howard.
Yes.
Ryan King.
Yes.
Joe Lindsay.
Here.
John Low.
Here.
Erica Moore.
Yes.
Chris Pass.
Here.
Phil Porter.
Yes.
All are present, you have a corner.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Next, we would come to our recognition and showcases, and in that we would let you guys go with your edge.
Good evening, tonight we have Mr. Dan and the Eagleson Elementary School Choir. They're going to perform. Followed up by that, we will recognize the Carvers Middle School Volleyball Team and William Blunt High School Volleyball Team. Any of our guests here to see the recognitions or showcases, don't, you don't have to feel obligated to stay for the entire meeting. At this time, I would like for Mr. Dan to bring his crew up here.
And if we may, we have one more short song to share with you. Many of the songs that we hear in the holiday season come to us from different countries. So we have a short French carol duet for you.
Angels we have heard our heart sweetly singing all the way. And the mountains in reply echoing their joyous strains. Gloria in excelsis Deo.
At this time, I would like to congratulate the Carvers Middle School Volleyball Team for winning a conference championship. I'd also like to congratulate the William Blunt High School Volleyball Team for a region championship and a sectional appearance. At this time, I'd like to bring Sam Banana to podium, to recognize it.
Once again, thank you all for letting me talk about the reason we do this and get to do all the fun stuff and let Brittany and people do all the boring stuff afterwards, okay? So, I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, we would like to first recognize the Carvers Middle School Volleyball Team. We've been talking about spikes and digs and the most spirited sport on the face of the earth, I think. If ladies will come on up, I'm going to ask Coach Willi Ombi to come up, and I don't want to, and Coach Chris Merritt, and talk just a little bit. Stay right here beside the microphone.
Hi guys, I'm pretty well, so I didn't know if I needed a microphone or not. Amalia Ombi, I had the pleasure of coaching these girls this past spring for the middle school Carvers team, and Chris Merritt helped me out this year. It was a really good season. The girls actually went undefeated, we had two teams, a JV team and a varsity team. Both teams went undefeated, did not lose a game, which is amazing. And actually only dropped three sets all the time. So, if you know volleyball, you might have guessed them three. And, so, that's pretty awesome, that they only lost three sets there, that it was a really good season. And, they went, the varsity team went 25 and zero, and the JV team went 17 and zero. And, won the district championship on both of the, the JV and varsity. So, we're a proud of these girls, we've been naming them, so much time. But I want to recognize them, so I want to have five names now to step forward. We have Eliana Lee, and we have Lila Bland, Lydia Hales, there she is, Paisley Ombi, Miranda Doll, Charlie Martin, Abigail Holloway, Blakey Merritt, Josie Kelso, Julia Hales, and Lily Griss. We have some other girls on our team that they were playing other sports, they couldn't make it to town. Let's give them a bigger round of applause.
In change number two, we would like to call Coach Kendra Titten up and, or, and Athletic Director Wendy Petty up to talk about some more changes. And, no pressure, Coach, but the last ones were undefeated, and at your fingers' cool, thanks, congratulations on one of the most phenomenal seasons I've ever heard in any sport period. So I'm going to let, are you going to speak, Chris?
Yes, I'll speak personally. Um, thank you, Ms. Bailey. So, I'm going to introduce Kendra Schofford, she has been our head coach for six years, and Tyler Sennett's been our assistant coach for five years. I'm going to let Kendra introduce the team to you, and then I'm going to talk about all the accomplishments they achieved this season.
Absolutely, like when you said, this is my sixth season with the girls as head coach. I'm just going to recognize them from seniors to freshmen, so you can kind of see their faces, so when you see the awards that they got, you can put the names and faces together. This is just super special for these girls, it was a great, last few years trying to get to this point, so these seniors really had a big part in that, so congratulations seniors to get us to this point. Our seniors are Eliza Hicks, Elise Ferguson, Caitlin Husband, Abby Harris, who is not able to make it today, and Cassie Swett. Juniors, we have Blakey Stewart, Ally Everett, Grace Heinz, Grace Brewster, who is also not able to make it, and Peyton Carell. And then sophomores, we have Ella Reed, Anna St. John, and Ava Dugan, who is not able to be here. And then two special freshmen, we have Paisley Ombi and Lydia Hales. So, it's our welcome.
So I'm going to talk about their accomplishments this season. This team went 37 and 2, over, from August to just a few weeks ago. They won the district and region tournaments. This was a first in school history. They did fall short, sides still in the section tournament, but that's awesome to make it to the section, that's a really hard milestone to get to. So congratulations to them. So as a team, they did fantastic. Here's some individual accomplishments and awards that they have received this season. Eliza Hicks and Caitlin Husband were nominated for the ABCA All-American List. Peyton Carell, Ella Reed, Ally Everett, Blakey Stewart, Lydia Hales, and Paisley Ombi were listed on the HBCA Vietnam Watch List for their respective classes. Eliza Hicks was named the district for MVP, district tournament MVP, regional tournament MVP, NTWAA Award of Excellence for Sportsmanship and Integrity. Peyton Carell was named to, named one county tournament MVP, all district team, all regional tournament team, district four hitter of the year, and first team all district. Ella Reed hit 1,002 assists in just one varsity season, putting her in the 1,000 assists club and on the track of breaking the school record. She was also named to the district four sophomore of the year and first team all district, one county tournament team, all district tournament team, and all regional tournaments. Elise Ferguson was named to, for the district four locker of the year, all academic team and second team all district, and named Player of the Week in October. Ally Everett was recognized by TWSAA and NHSS for Award of Excellence for Sportsmanship and Integrity, and was also named Player of the Week in early September. Caitlin Husband was named second team all district and currently holds the record for blocks in her career. Blakey Stewart was named for district four honorable mention, and was nominated for Player of the Year. As you can see, this is made up of individuals, young ladies who have accomplished a lot this season, and we're really proud of them and look forward to it. So, I'm going to congratulate them.
Oh yeah, we're going to take a picture with those students. Because we sweep that up, we still have to, like this.
Yeah, everybody's, the question's in here. Are you ready, three, two.
We would kind of add to our public comment, and we'd ask that our public comment disclaimer of the recording you presented this time.
Thank you for your interest in addressing the Blount County Board of Education. Citizens wishing to speak must provide their school board, district number, and direct comments to the board as a whole. Personal complaints against individual employees are not permitted in this setting and should instead be directed to the director of schools or their designee through the central office. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that Tennessee Code 3917306 prohibits disruptions during official meetings.
First, the senior, we have Harry Bracha, who speaks aloud and is on our agenda. Mr. Bracha?
Thank you, Mr. Herr. I'm from District Three, and I'm looking at the coach, Lindsay has the privilege of representing me, and, uh...
Thank you. My shortest, uh, comment would be regarding Agenda Item Number 10. I want to applaud the board for its diligence in trying to accomplish what it desires in a way that would meet the success in our community commission. Thank you very much. Also, I, my comments on, my greater length here have been written for me, uh, regard the consent agenda item, and particularly Dr. Rebecca Dickinson's comments on the October 2nd meeting. The minutes make the bullet points that I responded to. This is, of course, a serious concern, where you have students being prepared for standardized testing and taking much more time than perhaps should be devoted to it, and administering those tests as well, seems to be removing the opportunity to have an educational experience that could be better without so much standardized testing. I would be much more concerned with having curriculum that would promote studying and removing all social-emotional e-learning curriculum, SEL. Also, critical race theory needs to be removed from all the curriculum, whether how they dress it up or what you want to call it, the focus is to be off of what schools used to be focused on. Uh, we learn a lot, we read a lot, we also do a lot of homework, and prepare ourselves for making exercises and expressing ourselves. Students today have very poor English language skills, we need to remove the common core map because it creates confusion and is a stumbling block to a successful education experience, I believe. Our schools spend too much time on testing, both in preparation and administration, and they wouldn't have to do so if they were focused on actual education, that's really nothing to do with emotional results. School is not a place to be emotional, but kids act out of class, and we understand, of course, we have a lot of students that are economically disadvantaged households, and come from difficult backgrounds. However, discipline is lacking in our modern culture, and if we are not disciplining our children at home, and cannot discipline them at school, then they cannot learn because they are too busy doing other things like playing with their cellphones or their electronic devices that we provide them, laptops. We need to spend more time really digging into the curriculum and determining how to get out of the curriculums and the programs that we've spent time and money implementing and reinforcing in learning materials and books. Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Thank you, Mr. Bracha. Next, we would come to our consent agenda, and I would ask for a motion to set and approve the consent agenda. Motion in second, all in favor? Let that be known by saying aye. Thank you for that, our consent agenda has been set. Next, we come, asking for a motion to set and approve the agenda, put it simply. You have a motion in second, all in favor? Would you let that be known by saying aye?
Aye.
And it's set and agreed, thank you for that. I want to read to you, first of all, as we begin our agenda meeting tonight, that after the agenda was prepared in sunshine, Agenda Item Number One needed approval by the executive committee due to some unexpected maintenance repairs. Also, there is a correction that you will notice on Item Number Five, and it should say Fund 177 and not Fund 141. With that being said, we need a motion to amend the agenda, placing Item Number One on the consent agenda under the executive committee, and making correction on the agenda for Item Number Five. Motion in second, all in favor of those amendments? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Item Number Two on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget decrease for the initiative school of grants Fund 141 in the amount of $836,565.87. I ask for a motion to discuss.
Absolutely, second.
A motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye. At this time, is there any discussion or question regarding that? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in second, all in favor of that? Would you let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Item Number Three on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for the state-approved special education preschool grant, Fund 141, in the amount of $336,976.78. I would ask for a motion to discuss that.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
In second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Go to the discussion now, are there any questions or discussion regarding that? And I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Three on our agenda.
Second.
A motion in second, all in approval of that? Would you let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Item Number Four on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for sped occupational and physical therapy services and for educational services provided to students placed in residential care facilities, Fund 141, $464,300. Am I reading that correctly, yes, I am. $464,300. I ask for a motion to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any discussion or questions regarding Item Number Four on our agenda?
I have some questions.
Ms. Moore?
Okay, Brittany is for you. I just had a question, is this going to be a recurring, like yearly expense?
It is a recurring expense, it's a operating expense, last year the federal funds covered that.
Mm-hmm.
And this year, it just, the federal budget decreased, so local has to pick up the burden. Last year was a little bit of an oddity, because generally local does cover this, and we just had additional funds placed in the federal budget last year. There's no, knowing that, you have to set your budget before the state actually releases the federal funds budget, and usually you don't what you had the previous year, so the budget's already set by the time we got the federal fund budget, so now we just have to clean that up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question or discussion? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Four on our agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
A motion in second, all in favor? A motion in second, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Item Number Four on our agenda is approved as well. Item Number Five on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for the installation of a chain link fence around the corner elementary pre-k playground, not to be Fund One Seventy-Seven, for the amount of nine-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion or questions? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five this evening.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in second, all in favor of approving Item Number Five on our agenda this evening. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item Number Six on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for a full-depth replacement of a parking lot located at William Wood High School, Fund One Seventy-Seven education capital in the amount of seventy-one thousand, five-hundred dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss.
Motion.
Motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion or questions regarding Agenda Item Number Six? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor of approving Agenda Item Number Six? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, item Number Six. Item Number Seven, discussion and possible action regarding Bid Number Two Zero Two Six Dash Zero Zero One Six, Heritage Middle School Roof Replacement, and a budget increase for a full roof replacement at Heritage Middle School, Fund One Seventy-Seven education capital in the amount of two-million-six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, three-hundred dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion or questions regarding Item Number Seven? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Seven on our agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, and Item Number Seven passes. Item Number Eight on our agenda this evening, the discussion and possible action regarding budget increase for the purchase of the two-thousand-and-twenty-six Chevrolet Equinox for the Family Resource Center Fund, One Seventy-Seven education capital, amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And discussion or questions if it's done? I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Eight on our agenda this evening.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes item Number Eight. Item Number Nine on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding Blount County Board of Education to contract with Lewis Group Architects at an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars to perform a feasibility study and sign analysis of Blount County school property with the intent to possibly build a new Wollant Elementary School. I would ask for a motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
A motion in second, all in favor? Let that be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion or questions? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Nine on our agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
A motion in second, all in favor of that? Let's do a little call on that list. Danny, we're good, please.
Randy Early Howard.
Yes.
Brian King.
Yes.
Joe Lindsay.
Yes.
John Low.
Yes.
Erica Moore.
Yes.
Chris Pass.
Yes.
Phil Porter.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Item Number Ten on our agenda this evening, the discussion and possible action regarding a resolution regarding Blount County Government for accepting the additional responsibilities of Temporary Chief Financial Officer for Blount County Board of Education. I would ask for a motion to discuss. A motion in second, all in favor of that? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Then discussion or questions?
I have some discussion, and I do have a few questions. Okay, so, let me see, I wrote down this stuff so I didn't forget, but the first time that I ever saw, this is the first time that I ever saw a resolution that was used to pay someone. So I think when I first saw it, I was a little confused, and then I think it was, I was flustered, because I was a little taken back about the amount of it. I think at the time, it was twenty thousand, and I see on the new resolution, it's twenty-one thousand dollars. But typically, resolutions are used to support or disapprove a decision, mostly coming down the pipe usually from like the legislative session. So it could be anything that could heavily impact our school system is usually what resolutions are used for. And so I think that that's why I was confused about it. But I wanted to say that I reached out to other school systems, and in a situation like this, it's usually, what I was told is that it's usually the superintendent who makes the recommendation to the board, because we usually don't have a purview on personnel other than the superintendent, since we all really just have one employee. So it was explained to me between calling other schools and also talking to the TSBA, that the problem arise with the mixing of the taxpayer dollars, and I think that that is what a lot of people were focused on. Basically, you have the school budget, and then you have the county budget that you're moving money to. And so I think that this is also where the ambiguity lies and is the biggest obstacle that we've had to overcome, which is why most of the time, it's advised that you try not to mix these two areas, because you can no longer distinguish between where one begins and where the other one ends. The saving grace, I think, for us would have been a pre-agreed-upon contract for services provided, looking back. With that being said, I also have a duty to get questions answered, because I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me who had these questions, and I also have a few of them. And if anybody could answer them today, I don't know if it's Chris that can answer some, or if it's Brittany, our CFO, who might be able to answer some of the questions, but these are the questions that I have. What's the agreement pro bono? If not, what were the terms discussed and who approved them? Is there a ledger of hours? How much was completed during county hours and or after hours? And how was the twenty-one thousand number configured? And has it changed from the twenty thousand from the previous resolution? So why the extra thousand dollars got added to it? Can any of this documentation be physically produced for the board today? Is my question.
Certainly. And this is sort of fact that will help us, in person form of, it is of unusual nature, certainly. And I think when we look back at mid-Febuary, we found ourselves in a board in a very unusual place. And I think the work that was done and accomplished was pretty unusual in and of itself as well. I reached out to Ben Torres, who is an attorney with Tennessee School Board Association, to discuss the best mannerisms that passed through forward, and it was he who recommended that we do it in the form of a resolution. After that, once drafting that resolution, we sent it to our new board attorney, Chris McCarty, for his review and approval, and his only concern was, had we consulted the State Councilor's Office? Through that, we did through Ms. Brittany, our CFO, reach out to the State Councilor's Office, and it was their recommendation that we return the amount of compensation black to Blount County Government and let them compensate their employees, since that person is not an employee of Blount County Schools. That's the reason we came to the avenue that we are. In mid-January and in February of two thousand and twenty-five, as I said, we're very young with President of Times for us, the board. I reached out to the Mayor, Ed Mitchell, and to the Blount County Government CFO, Ryan Baldwin, and asked for a meeting. And there, in that meeting with them, asked them if they would be willing to come alongside of us in some temporary mannerisms to help the Blount County School Board and Blount County Schools of Administration in the form of financial and budgetary counseling and support. When we look at Blount County's budget of about two-hundred-and-eighty-nine million annually, Blount County Schools represents a little over a hundred-and-fifty million of that, a little over half. I don't know another division of Blount County Government that has a CFO. There apparently may be, I did not spend much time researching in that, but as far as I know, Blount County Government has a CFO, and Blount County Schools has a CFO, because of the large amount of responsibility, the large amount of funding, seven, almost seventeen-hundred employees, twenty-one locations, ten thousand students to take on that task. Also, as we come to that time in mid-Febuary, we're quickly, we're approaching collaborative conferencing for our teachers and our educators. Also, by the first debate, we needed to have a twenty-five, twenty-six budget in place. In that mannerism and asking for their assistance, they agreed to help and come alongside of us. And I think what we're saying now, as we look back, and I know I found it a lot easier looking back, to say, well, I wish we'd have done that in a different way, is it would have been easier for us now had we entered into some type of a compensation agreement at that time for the work that we'd done on the scale. I think we'd all agree, and I think I look for it here, Shane, what it is that we'd have done on the front end and hadn't agreed on what that compensation would look like, I think we would be in a better place for the decision. Second of all, when you look at the rate we paid for our CFOs and what they were paying on an annual basis or a monthly basis, I'm approximating, as I give you this number, but it's somewhere between ten-five and eleven-five a month is what we were paying our CFO in place. One of our retired CFOs, who our board attorney at that time, Rob Goddard, who was asked to be the consultant on some accounting information, and his retired rate to come in and meet with us per hour was two-hundred-and-sixty dollars an hour. So based on what the current rate for CFOs are charging for those things, we came up with some flat, what we felt like was a very mild set of numbers to provide compensation. I just want to highlight a few of what those things look like. We began mid-Febuary to work on a compensation collaborative pay scale for Blount County teachers that had been front-end heavy, maybe wooden ear, and lacking for teachers that had a number of years with us. And Mr. Baldwin came here with us at our request to set in with collaborative conferencing meetings with us and the Blount County Teachers Association, and we ended up those agreement, collaborative conferencing, and come up with the best pay scale we could. And it was out of those meetings that we were able to come up with a little over a four-million-dollar increase in pay compensation for our teachers in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and go from a twenty-five-year step to a thirty-year step compensation. It looks like it's over, a little over the highest compensation over which we've had in a little over a decade. And that was taking place with commission approval, of course. Also, Mr. Baldwin worked with us to define clear administrative pay scales. When we were looking at administrative pay scales here, again, for a company, I'm looking at it as a company perspective, a hundred-and-thirty million dollars a year, roughly a hundred-and-fifty million on everything to conclude for Blount County Education, and almost seventeen-hundred employees, and there was not a clearly defined pay scale in place of what administrators were paying. And he began to work with that group. We developed a collaborative conferencing group of administrators who came to work with us here and met here in this conference room several times to look at the compensation for administrators based on their level that they were currently at and proposed levels of what that would look like a long time. It looked like there were some folks that the scales were not appropriate, they weren't clearly defined, and it wasn't in the best industry we want involved. He worked with us in those efforts as well. He also worked alongside of us to construct the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, at the same time, constructing the Blount County Government twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and working with the other divisions of Blount County Government to construct their budgets as well. And in that process, we were able to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six budget that gave the teachers a little over four-million-dollar increase, gave us about three-and-a-half million dollars in approximation to go fund new intervention coaches and new instructional aides, new employees to come into the system, which we ought to reveal to us we needed in several areas. And so there was about a seven-and-a-half million dollar increase in those two items, as they come together along the bus contracts, along the classified people. We had about a nine-point-one or two increase in our budget for two thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six, and about two million that came into us from TISA and additional sales tax. But here's the most gems to that. The other seven million dollars or so was within the current budget. We didn't have to ask county government for any additional funding to provide a large compensation increase, and it began to hire the many new hires that were able to do all that, working in conjunction with Blount County Government and Blount County CFOs and their departments in that, as we put it in place. Also, there was a great opportunity with One Forty-One and One Seventy-Seven. As we had been paying for athletic projects out of the past, and all of it coming out of One Forty-One, which is, if you know that, it's been a great learning for me, is a split penny budget that we're working on, that's our operating budget. And we've been paying for large athletic projects and capital improvement projects out of that, out of that, that did not have to be. According to working with the CFO of Blount County Government, Ryan Baldwin, Blount County Government, and the State Councilor's Office, we came to the clarity of what defines a capital improvement project. Having that so, just recently here, in one of our previous meetings, we moved about two-and-a-half million dollars worth of capital improvement projects over from One Forty-One, which is where we're having to split that penny to fund those projects, over to One Seventy-Seven, where it's an entire penny about, saving us by making that move in Blount County Education and our One Forty-One operating budget. Two different CFOs had shared that, I mean, in excess of two million dollars worth of savings in our One Forty-One project, is what we were able to do with that. And further now going forward, put in gym floors, tracks, other projects that previously had been coming out of One Forty-One, we now know from the State Councilor's Office, are able to be funded out of One Seventy-Seven where they should be, and it frees up a lot more of the budget to do greater things in the education system. Having said that, in the absence of our CFO for that six-month period, about ten-five and eleven-five per month, I just think there's a lot of savings that were provided, a lot of working together that took place for us to come up with a number. I also wanted to hand those comments to you by saying that Mr. Baldwin did not ask for a dime, Ed Mitchell didn't ask for a dime, Blount County Government had an actual incentive. And I think looking back, we would also, boy, it would have been a lot easier if we'd did that on the front end of the way. But in this case, we didn't see where we are in the length of what it would be like and how far that would go. And I think we of the board felt like it was going to be very important that the new director, whoever that new director was going to be, played a significant role in the hiring of the new CFO that they'd be working very closely with. And I think if we look back and we look at where we are now, as closely as that might look, I think it was still the best call, and I think it still kind of, I hope that answers some of the questions we're getting. Any other questions or more comments? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Item Number Ten on our agenda. A motion in second. Ms. Danny, let's take that one, my little talk's running low.
Who was the first question? Was it you, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gar.
Yeah.
Okay, Brian King?
Yes.
Joe Lindsay?
Yes.
John Low?
Yes.
Erica Moore?
No.
Chris Pass?
Yes.
Phil Porter?
Yes.
Randy Early Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next, we would come to comments from the Blount County Education Association. Ms. Rebecca?
Thank you. Good evening. American Education Week is November seventeenth through twenty-first. It honors the incredible teamwork that happens in our schools every single day. From teachers and education support professionals to counselors, nurses, and bus drivers, every role matters. Together, we create the foundation that allows our students to thrive and our community to grow stronger. The Tennessee Education Association statewide theme for American Education Week this year is every educator, every student, every community. When educators are supported, students succeed. When students succeed, communities prosper. Here in Blount County, we share a common goal. We want to make our district the best place to live, to teach. We want to make our district the best place to live, teach, and learn, let strengthened educator voice in decision-making, pri- prioritize policies that lift up teaching and learning, and celebrate the incredible professionals who make our schools work. Because when we stand together, educators, families, and communities, we build strong schools, strong communities, and a strong family.
Thank you, Ms. Reddy. Next, we will come to comments from our student representatives, and we begin to have a Seeding with Egleton College and Careers, and we solve them.
For the months of October and September, Egleton has gone through numerous events. For starters, we had our first ever football homecoming, Ellie Menz being crowned Homecoming Queen. Egleton has also launched a Royal of the Month as we celebrate students, staff, and faculty across grade levels with a catered mealship and a royal gathering. This has been an awesome way of spreading positivity around the school. As far as sports go, our football team has earned a title of region champions. We are so proud to celebrate this first and much our football team in the playoffs. ECCA hosted our second annual trunk retreat. Although it rained and had been moved inside, the turnout was phenomenal and raised a towering spirit for the surrounding community. On October seventeenth, it was former ECCA staff member's birthday. This staff member, Kelly Warner, battled breast cancer. On her birthday each year, Egleton staff wear a game. Egleton also hosted an art showcase, which included a free spaghetti dinner and amazing art from Egleton students. For the month of October, Egleton celebrated Red River League, which is an annual drug violence prevention campaign. During that league, students were on red slips and paper, and the student council made it into a chain, and now getting to the council center. ECCA has had two great months and has accomplished many things. We can't wait to see what's next.
Thank you for that, Ms. Allen. Next, we have our representative from Heritage High School, Ms. Ella.
Good afternoon, we've just got some really good news from our Lady Mounter Cross Country Team. They just finished a burner-up in the state championship meet in Memphis today, about two hours ago. Um, the team members are A.J. Thomas, Adeline Green, Hannah Husky, Emma McKinney, Molly Low, Happy Mitchy, Happy Palmer, Tylee Putman, Lillian Rushmore, Ella Robertson, and Sawyer Wood. Two members of the boys' cross-country team have also qualified for the state championship meet, Brandon Vauter and Tiffany Good. ROTC is helping coordinate with student council and various clubs, sports teams, and performance groups to gather food items to provide Thanksgiving meals for heritage families. Our goal is to raise enough funds for non-perishable food items to support twenty families. You may contact the Hirsch High School main office if you would like to support our groups and families in our community. The cosmetology class will be hosting a pamper night on November sixth from four P.M. to six P.M. in the cosmetology classroom. Contact Ms. Lindsey to schedule an appointment for grades, watches, nails, and more. Last, last night, the Smoky Mountain FCA hosted a Field of Faith event in Jack Denver Stadium. All local FCA groups were invited, with over four-hundred-and-fifty students in attendance for a fun night of food and fellowship. A hundred percent of our class of Two Thousand Twenty-Six seniors have completed their Tennessee promis- promise applications. That is two consecutive years that a hundred percent of the senior class has completed the Tennessee promise application. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ella. Next, from Samuel Everett School of Innovation, Ms. Stella.
Good evening, today another great month. Oh, we had another great month at Sussie. We kicked off fall break with our zoo film trip, and the weather could not have been better. Our students and families enjoyed a wonderful day learning about the animals, event participation, and event participate in hands-on experience in zoo classroom. Our solid senior activity leadership team and senior class hosted a first annual trunk retreat. There were so many creative contests, and we had an amazing community turnout with over two hundred in attendance. Plans are already in promotion for next year's event. The next event they were planning is a Thanksgiving food drive November fourth through fourteenth of non-perishable food items. This will be a contest between the grades eight to twelve to earn a pizza party. Our eighth graders attended Career Exploration Day, where they got to dream big and exer- or experience potential career paths through hands-on experiences. Our seniors also visited Tallahassee State, learning more about the opportunities available to them as they plan for life after graduation. We were excited to welcome Great News Channel Six, who visited to learn more about our innovative approach, cultural education, the segment where it passed Thursday. Our teachers spent their most recent professional development day diving deep into the world of artificial intelligence and its growing impact on teaching and learning. Together, they explored how AI can enhance classroom experience, personalize instruction, and empower both educators and students. The day focused on developing the best practices that elevate great teaching, ensuring that innovation and technology work hand in hand to enrich learning for every set of student. Our athletic teams continue to make us proud. Middle School Cross Country wrapped up their season with Blair Davis splits a forty-seven out of two-hundred-and-eighteen girls in the Tennessee Middle School Championship. We can't wait to see how she contributes to our winter sport. Kayla Dowd achieved an all-region team recognition as a member of the Egleton volleyball team. We are very proud of Kayla and her hard work. Our student Winter Easterling, Kayla Bowden, and Maggie Hannah were recognized on the all-district team as members of the Egleton soccer team. Again, we are thankful for their dedication as student athletes. Our bowling teams are working hard and showing steady progress. The boys are fifth in the district with a record five to three, and the girls are fourth with a three to three record. We also celebrated our nine senior football players as they played their final regular season game last week and secured the region championship. Egleton posts the first round of playoffs tomorrow. It's been a wonderful full month at Sussie, and we look forward to keeping the momentum going as we head into the holiday season. We are very proud of our staff, students, and family, and are grateful for the continued support we've brought. For more information about our school, please visit our website, seven letters, school.com, or answer the community understanding at Everest School of Innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella. Next, we come to William Blunt High School, and Parker.
Well, the William Blunt Football Team won the Battle of the Bell, and, uh, Boys Cross Country placed third in regional and qualified for state competition. We had our first annual trunk or tree a few weeks ago, and that was extremely successful, where there were five hundred pounds of candy that was distributed, and more than thirty decorated trunks. Families from all over the community endured an event full of trick and, trick, trick-or-treating, face painting, and festive treats. And we want to thank everyone who participated to help make that event possible. We have a Veteran's Day program tomorrow morning at ten fifteen in the William Blunt Gymnasium, and breakfast for the veterans will be served at nine o'clock in the main campus lobby.
Thank you for that, Parker. And for all four of our student representatives, thank you for being here, and sharing the latest updates, and thank you for that. Next, we become the comments from our director, Director Ridge.
And first of all, I want to say, you know, thank you, Veterans Day coming up, thank you to all our veterans, and I'm especially grateful for all the veterans we have, uh, serving in our school system. Uh, it means a lot when, when people like that who have served our country come in and continuing public service in our schools. Um, also, I want to say, um, I'm really happy to hear the success of, uh, how the fall sports went, and, uh, we have plenty of celebrating to do in the next, uh, couple of more meetings. Um, I will, um, also say, well, as far as the Egleton football winning the region championship, that, that's, it's been a long time since a Mont County School has done that. Uh, thank Earl Matt Man was the coach after the Heritage Mount Years in eighty-seven, the last time that happened, so that's awesome. I also want to give a shout-out to, uh, Trevor Wright, he's on the, uh, Egleton football team, and Connor Cox, and they're also taking their time out here to, to, uh, help us with this meeting, so that, that's really, uh, a cool thing as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you for Director Ridge. Comments from the board? I'm just going to share with you as we close tonight, we've had an opportunity to be at some of our schools this month, and just saw the side of all the great things that we see taking place, and great opportunities that we're seeing in, in you, and we just want to say thank you, and then remind you that we're in prayer for all of you, and that just wish you the best, uh, as you go into the month of November now, and December, I know it's hard to keep everybody focused as you approach Thanksgiving and then Christmas, but we just want to share our appreciation of all, and thank you for all the great work that you've gotten to accomplish for us. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a motion and a second? We are adjourned, thank you for being here.